And I will call this special meeting of the Grass Valley City Council to order today, Tuesday, August 5th. Any person with a disability who requires accommodations to participate in the meetings should telephone the city clerk's office at 530-274-4390, at least 48 hours prior to the meeting, to make a request for disability-related modification or accommodation. City Council welcomes you to attend the meetings electronically or in person at the City Hall Council Chambers located at 125 East Main Street, Grass Valley, California, 95945. Regular meetings are scheduled at 7:00 PM on the second and fourth Tuesdays of each month. Your interest is encouraged and appreciated. This meeting is being broadcast on YouTube, cityofgrassvalley.com, Nevada County Media. Members of the public are encouraged to submit public comments via voicemail at 530-274-4390, or email public@cityofgrassvalley.com. Comments will be reviewed and distributed before the meeting. If they're received before the meeting in time, comments received after that will be addressed during the item or at the end of the meeting. Council will have the option to modify their action on the items based on comments received. Agenda materials, staff reports, and background information related to regular agenda items are available on the city's website, cityofgrassvalley.com. Materials related to an item on this agenda submitted to the council after distribution of the agenda packet will be made available on the city of Grass Valley's website, subject to staff's ability to post documents. Please note that individuals who disrupt, disturb, impede, or render infeasible the orderly conduct of a meeting will receive one warning that if they do not cease such behavior, they may be removed from the meeting. The chair has the authority to order individuals removed if they do not cease their disruptive behavior following this warning. No warning is required before an individual is removed if that individual engages in a use of force or makes a true threat of force. Council chambers are wheelchair-accessible and listening devices are available if you would like some of these options or want to, you know, see about accommodations. You can contact the city clerk 72 hours in advance of the meetings. I will now call the meeting to order, and our first order of business is the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Role call, please, daily?
Councilmember Arbuckle?
Here.
Councilmember Bonamalo?
Present.
Councilmember Ivy?
Here.
Vice Mayor Caravelli?
Present.
Mayor Hodge?
Here.
All five members are present.
Okay. Next item on the agenda is the agenda approval. Are there any?
No changes from staff.
Okay, I'll entertain a motion.
So moved.
All second.
All those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? That passes. Next item on our agenda is public comment. Members of the public are encouraged to submit public comments via voicemail at 530-274-4390, or email at public@cityofgrassvalley.com. We will now open public comment on any items not agendized for this special meeting. Seeing no one in the chambers rushing to the podium, are there any comments in the virtual world?
There are no virtual public comments at this time.
Okay, we will now close public comment and move on to consent. All matters listed under the consent calendar are to be considered routine by the city council and Grass Valley redevelopment agency, and will be enacted by one motion in the form listed. There will be no separate discussion of these items unless before the city council votes on a motion to adopt members of the council, or the public request specific items to be removed from the consent calendar for separate discussion and a roll call vote is taken. We do public comment on consent items as a whole, so if you're commenting on anything on consent, we will open up public comment for consent now. Okay, I think that takes care of it in here. Are there any comments in the virtual world?
There are no additional public comments at this time.
Okay, we will now close public comment on the consent calendar items, and I will entertain a motion in a second.
Madam Mayor, would staff mind summing up the two items on consent counter for me? I had the impression that this agenda was shorter, and I didn't do my due diligence in reading the consent calendar like I would have otherwise. It could be super brief.
Nope, totally fine. So the first item is the management supervisor professional confidential employee unit one, and that's the side letter. So this, we are asking that side letter with the firefighters association to be modified, or with unit one and the firefighters in that unit to be modified for two individuals. One, our fire marshal, and the other is our EMS supervisor, so that they can be deployed to incidents and get the same kind of reimbursement as a battalion chief would under the agreement. So it's just adding those two positions to that. The city benefits because when they go on a large incident like that, they get excellent training, and we also get reimbursed for the time that they're gone, so we aren't losing out on funds. So it's a win-win. Is just changing the signatures on our local agency investment fund, or LEAF, with the removal of the administrative service or director administrative services director position, we are putting back in the finance director position and the deputy finance director position in addition to the city manager position to be able to sign those accounts. So those are the two consent items.
Thank you. No additional comments from my part.
State council member Ivy, I will entertain a motion.
So moved.
Is there a second?
All second.
All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? Great, that passes. Next on our agenda is public hearing. This is the request to place fiscal year 2025-26 assessment for the Loma Rica Ranch Landscaping and Lighting District on the property tax roll.
So, good evening, Mayor, and good evening, Council. So this one is really a short item. It's really an administrative item. So here, this is the final step in the annual levy process. So on November 12th, 2024, council passed by resolution the engineers report and the authorization to place assessments for the new Loma Rica Lighting and Landscaping District. When that happened, what happens is per county requirements, in the resolution, there's very specific language that needs to be on the resolution, which says standard form tax collection service contract, and that has to be on there to actually ensure the proper placement on the tax roll. In the resolution that was, that was done in November, that language was not on there. So when I went to place the rolls, or the tax rolls here in June, in July, we weren't able to actually place them because of that language. So what we're doing is we're actually just doing the resolution to do the authorization that council has already approved, but actually has the standard language that the county requires. So now it mimics the other 10 districts that you guys approved at the end of June. Now it just mimics all the resolutions so that we have the correct authority per the county required, so that we can finish the assessments for the Loma Rica Ranch Lighting and Landscaping District. So that's all this is. That's the full presentation that I have.
Excellent. I'm glad I didn't have to go to City Hall to fix typos in college. We will go ahead and, unless we have any questions from council, open this up for public comment. Seeing no one rushing to the podium, are there any public comments in the virtual world on this one?
Hey, this is Matthew Coulter, making a public comment for the city of Grass Valley City Council meeting at 3:00 on Tuesday, the 5th. And my public comment relates to the dead trees that have been dead for years, on Whispering Pines, which is city easement and city landscaping. Very, very dead. It's not a question of if they're dead or if they're going to come back. They've been dead for years. It's very obvious. The washing of the trash and oil down the storm drains around town is prolific, and if you go over by Diego's right now, look in the creek, you'll see exactly what I'm talking about. It's been there for days, just hovering on top of the water because it can't mix in. The air quality is very bad locally here, and we've even had planes launched to fight a fire that wasn't a fire, it was dust being created by people just right on the edge of city limits in the sphere of influence. That's the PG mean yard, so somebody needs to deal with those folks, hopefully food in the city. When you guys do street sweep the streets with the street sweeper, you're not using water, so it's creating a lot of dust. So it's kind of defeating your purpose. The dog-eared fences at Loma Rica Ranch are basically banned by Cal Fire and should be banned in the town also. They're such a fire hazard. And when you cleaned off Dorsey Marketplace of all the folks living up there, we ended up with a lot of new graffiti, slashed tires, stolen things, broken windows, and pretty much everyone's living over on the camp over by De Martini's on Idaho Maryland Road now. So if you want to go visit anyone, they're, they're all over there. Thanks a lot.
And that is the end of the public comments.
Okay, and I understand that that was in part for this item and then in part just general public comment. Okay, I will now close public comment and bring it back to council for any questions or comments.
Okay, now seeing any questions, I would like to make a motion to place the fiscal year 2025-26 assessment for Loma Rica Ranch Landscaping and Lighting District on the property tax roll.
I will second. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Any abstentions? That passes. Okay, next on our agenda is the collection of delinquent sewer and water accounts on the Nevada County tax roll.
So again, good afternoon, Mayor and City Council. So again, I am here to present on behalf of placing the delinquent water and sewer charges on the Nevada County property tax roll. So again, this is something that we do on an annual basis. I do want to inform everybody or remind everybody that this is not a new tax, but this is just a method of a way to recover unpaid charges for sewer and water services that have been consumed by users but have not been paid by the property owners. That these are for delinquencies that aren't collected yet, but if, if it's not paid, then other rate pairs will have to, effectively, they would have to be subsidizing or paying for unpaid services. So the Health and Safety Code, Section 5473 allows cities to place unpaid utility charges on property tax rolls only as a method of collection, not as a new tax or as a new fee. And so as a reminder, when we place this on, it's under the TEATER Plan through Nevada County. So what that means is that the county will pay the city in full for these charges upfront, and then Nevada County takes on the role of going after the collection, which helps with the stability and the timing of the revenue for, for getting our reimbursement back. So the city doesn't have to take the time and the effort to try to go after collecting these payments. Property owner, owners have been notified per state law for this collection to be happening, so they've been given ample state time to be able to make the payment. We've also offered anybody who has wanted to or has come in payment arrangements, so if someone offered to go on a payment arrangement, that has been made. We also want to note that some customers intentionally use this as a method of a way to consolidate payments through property tax bills, so there are several people who choose not to pay bills through the year and purposely have them put on their property taxes on an annual basis. And we do have some customers that year over year use this as a way to pay bills. So as of today, we have an updated list that was placed on everybody's desk, and we have 90 accounts, totaling $149,315.70. So that's currently what's been up paid and eligible. Right now, the property taxes need to be uploaded to the county by August 10th, which is on the weekend. We'll probably get those uploaded this Thursday, so I'll be working with the lady who takes the collection of all the payments, and if anybody pays by that date, we'll be taking them off the list. But if they're not, this will be the list that will be uploaded by this Thursday, so we can make sure that they're uploaded and done on a timely basis. So this is pretty close to what we're proposing to upload to the county by the end of this week. And with that is that's the end of the presentation that I have at this time. Thank you.
Thank you very much. I will bring it to council for any questions. Okay, I see no questions. I will open this up for public comment.
Hi.
Hi.
My name is Dawn Bateman. I live at 513 Wall Street in Grass Valley. I already sent this email to you, Mr. Bonamalo, but I wanted to share it with the rest of the council. And it said, I am appalled, and you guys got to know, I never use that word, but I am truly appalled that Grass Valley City Council member Joe Bonamalo believes that not paying your water bill is somehow a constitutional right. And we pay, the Batemans pay their water bill in full and on time every time the bill comes, but under the logic that was expressed, we're fools, and we shouldn't, we should choose to not pay, and we would have no consequences without this motion. You know, I'm not a lawyer, but I did some research about the issue. The items cited, California Constitution, Article 1, Sections 9 and 10, is justification. Article 9 prohibits the passage of laws that impair the obligations of contract. But it seems to me that we, as citizens, are in contract with the city to pay our bills. So, seems to, so, in reference to Section 10, the Constitution says, "A person may not be imprisoned in a civil action for debt or tort." But I fail to see when enforcement of payment obligation constitutes imprisonment, since that's never happened in the history of anything I know. I want to say that I think water systems are vital to the quality of life we have here in Grass Valley and Nevada County. The infrastructure that supports water systems are not free, nor are the contractual obligations the city has with NID for delivery. I believe it's irresponsible and a negligence of duty to the office of city council member to support scofflaws who don't pay their bills. And I urge the council to adopt the policy of enforcement. Thank you.
Thank you for your comment. Are there any other people in the chambers for public comment on this item? Seeing none, are there any in the virtual world?
There are no additional public comments at this time.
Okay, I will now close public comment and bring it back to the council for any additional questions or comments.
I would like to go ahead and make a couple of comments, please. Okay. I appreciate your comment, Mrs. Bateman. Yeah. This is a, this is a complex issue, because it seems simple on the surface. However, as I noted with my comments at the last meeting, is that we have, we have a little bit of a, an issue in the last five or six years with, with the survivability, you know, of, of bills, taxes, fees, fines, et cetera administratively. I think this list started out with 103, it's down to 90 now. Most people are residents in the community. There are, you know, a fair share of businesses, and I believe like 12 businesses on there, as far as I could see. Forty of the people or businesses on this list have a bill over $1,500, okay, which leaves remaining, you know, over half that are, have smaller amounts. Those are particularly the people that I'm really wanting to support more, because if you do take a look at our, the landscape over the last five, six years, it's been incredibly difficult to survive in this economy. You have a lot of people that are in arrears on several levels. What I'm really trying to convey, my message is that, you know, we, we're elected to support constitutional rights, you know, or rights that the Constitution supports. And I think that's really our number one duty, you know, is to, is to fight for people in our community. And, um, I think that's really our number one duty, you know, is to, is to fight for people in our community. And if you factor in the landscape for the last five or six years, a lot of people in this community are having a really tough time surviving. Um, water is a right. Uh, it's an unalienable, uninfrangible right. And when does government overreach? When do, uh, these types of fines and fees ever, um, benefit the people? Yeah, we need to pay our bills and we need to be responsible. But you look a lot of, at a lot of families around here right now, and they can't, they can't even, you know, pay their PG&E. Uh, they can't pay a lot of bills, not just their water bill. So when does the city step in and actually throw the people a bone here and there? Now, I'm not, after, you know, close, um, inspection of, of this list, there are people on here, you know, Caltrans, I mean, why aren't, why isn't Caltrans paying their bill? That's pretty ob, you know, pretty obvious, you know, uh, someone that we should be working with pretty steadily to try to get that bill, um, paid. And there are other, you know, businesses on here. I talked to, um, Nevada County Country Club. I reached out to, you know, as many people as I could talk to on this. Um, they, they have actually asked for an extension a couple of times on their bill, and now they're actually gonna provide their own water source. That's awesome self-governance right there. You know, that's creating, uh, a solution to a problem that now they can back away from the city. They don't have to rely on the city water. You know, that's, that's a really great answer and solution. However, they weren't extended an opportunity to pay their bill. Um, they're on the lower half of some of the bigger bills, but they're over fifteen hundred dollars. But you just take into each of the individual account. I mean, I realize this takes time from staff, but, you know, uh, people at the city are paid a lot of money to do this job. Us up here, we're not paid a whole lot of money, you know, we just try to guide the staff. Um, however, you know, this is just a matter of contacting the person in, in regard to their outstanding bill and working with them. I feel like some of these people may, may deserve a pass. I mean, you know, PG&E offers, uh, uh, they are, they're a huge corporation, obviously, but they offer forgiveness plans, uh, to people that can't afford it, continuously noted that they can't afford to pay their bill. You know, how come we're not extending, we're supposed to be protecting the people in this job? How come we're not extending some of these, uh, possibilities or opportunities to the people? So it, it is a little bit of complex. I don't want to completely say that I think everyone on this list should deserve a pass, but I do believe some people should. And I think that just takes a little bit more due diligence on, on staff's part. I mean, uh, it's not easy. And, and I'll just say this, you know, collection is, is an unlawful, uh, practice. I mean, if you look at the Fair Debt and Collection Act, not any corporation, any business is allowed to contact the customer through the mail verbally, et cetera, to make a collection. So this really does violate the Constitution on several levels, and that's, that's my job to point that out. So that's what I'm doing. And, uh, you know, maybe there, maybe it needs to just be revisited and really fine-tooth comb through this list and see who, who should, you know, potentially deserve, uh, a pass. Let them catch up and start paying their bill on time again. I mean, like I said, this is not something that other corporations don't do, and we are a corporation. So I'll just end it with that.
Can I say something since I didn't get to talk last time?
Do you want to go first?
Please.
Excellent.
Thank you.
Thank you.
First of all, you want to pick, I want, I just want to understand what you're saying. You want to pick and choose who has to pay their bill. Um, it's my understanding that the city, and it has always been, reaches out to every single person that is on this, on this, uh, on this list. There are people that are, don't live in, they don't even live in Nevada County. Their names are on this list. There are businesses that are on this list. You're gonna say that, um, one business deserves a pass, but another one doesn't? Just going by what, what you're saying? That is unfair to every single person who pays their bills on time, who pays their water bill, their PG&E bill, as horrific as it is, pays their phone, pays their rent, pays for the groceries that they purchase at the grocery store, because that is an obligation that you make. Do I think everybody has a right to water? Everybody has a right to, um, sewer? Everybody has a right to, um, housing? Everybody has a right to food? I agree one hundred percent. However, there's a way to go about that. The city has al- always offered a payment plan to anybody and everybody that is on this list. Some people choose to not do it because they choose to not pay their bill, period. Um, I think this has always been basically a, uh, you know, a, a matter of course. It comes out usually as soon as this thing hits public, the city starts getting phone calls from people because they don't want their name at, at our meeting. So they're, they start paying their bill or making arrangements. The people that are still here have been contacted. And if, please correct me if I'm wrong, have they, they've been contacted more than once? Is that correct?
There has been two letters that have gone out. I'm not a hundred percent sure if everybody's been contacted by phone. I'd have to verify with the lady who works at the front counter to find that part out. But several people have reached out to her and have contacted her.
Okay.
Either by mail, a lot of people have called her.
Okay. So if you don't pay your rent, you get a notice? You don't pay your rent, you don't get to live there? You go to the grocery store, you purchase groceries, you say, "I'm having a hard time, I can't pay for them," and walk out the door. Who pays for all of that? Every single person that pays their bills on time, who pays for whatever services that they choose to have. You know, again, I agree, everybody deserves to have water. Everybody deserves to have housing. Everyone deserves food. But there is a process to get it and to do it legally. So it does not impact every other person that pays for it. Because when you start saying that only the people who can afford it have to pay for everybody else, you're looking at socialism. And that's not something that the Constitution supports. So, um, I'm not done.
That's fine. I didn't state that. I didn't state that, so you're misrepresented.
I said, I'm not done.
That's fine.
Do not interrupt me.
No, that's fine. Go ahead.
So we need to move forward with this. This is a special meeting of, that's taking up our staff's time, our council members' time, for something that is routine. If people don't want to pay their bills, there are consequences. We teach our children, if you don't do what you're told, there are consequences. I have my five-year-old grandson for the last four days, and boy, we are learning about consequences. So, I mean, everybody has consequences. You don't pay your bill, it goes on the property tax. They're not gonna come and take your house. They're not gonna evict you. It's just, it goes on the property tax. So when that property is sold, the, the unpaid bills and the liens are paid. And unless, I know you wanted to say something, so go ahead, Hillary, I'm sorry.
Thank you. No, I, I wanted to give you, um, room and time to say whatever you needed to, but.
Thank you.
Um, and you're gonna respond if, if you would like in just a second. Joe, I appreciate your insight, and I, I appreciate that, um, you can offer some clarity and clarification, Jan. I think what's really important for the public to understand, um, the people that we serve, the, the people who live within the city limits of Grass Valley, is that this is not ill-spirited. We really want everybody in our community to have an opportunity, um, to, to make right for the services that they have used. And if they have a bill, we really want you to be able to come into City Hall and make a payment plan if that's necessary, or address it, or if it's just an error. Um, you know, I, I know that life is very lify for everybody, and it's, sometimes things go without regard, and it's just a mistake, and everybody makes those, and that's okay. What this does is takes the unpaid bills for the small number of people in the community who did not pay their water and who are fees for the services they've already used and streamline it by putting it on the tax roll for the, for the county property taxes as we were just told. But I do want to clarify some of this conversation because I think it's really important for everyone to understand that we are not a corporation. We are a government entity. And we do take an oath to uphold the Constitution. And we are also charged with the oversight for the good stewardship of taxpayer dollars. We are caretakers of the commons. And what we want is for everybody in our, in our community to have the opportunity to have clean water, to have water that goes to their house with infrastructure upkeep. And we, we want to ensure that the infrastructure is for the entire good of the people. And that does take resources, and it does take money to make sure that those resources are cared for. And it also takes people who are employed by the city, who have the skillset and the expertise, to take care of those things. I could not pretend to know how to jackhammer a hole in our street to fix a sewer line. But that takes somebody. And so the idea that somehow city employees are part of the problem is very upsetting because they are compensated at a competitive rate with benefits, given their qualifications and expertise. They are not the enemy of the people. I certainly would love a job that pays me what I'm worth, that respects me, and is, you know, full of benefits. I think all of us have that as a dream for what, you know, we, whether we're in the trades or whether we went to school for something specific, or whether we're an artist, or any of the, any number of jobs, I think everybody wants to have a living wage. And so I don't want the conversation to be about, "This person makes that much," or whatever else. What we need to be talking about is how can we best care for our community as a whole with everybody in mind? And if there is a system that, that streamlines something so that staff is freed up to pay more attention to, to some of the other things, that's important. And I understand that what we want to ensure is that the people who are struggling the most in this community are upheld, because we are only as good as the people who need the care the most. And we, of course, need to ensure that the people who need help know how to reach out and know how to make a payment plan. That is definitely the spirit of this body. And while we may have different ideas about how to get things done, I know that everybody on this council has the same intention, which is to make Grass Valley the best place to live, work, and play for everybody in our care. And I don't know why a, a very, um, routine issue that we have passed unanimously, usually with no comments and no discussion because it's, it's a no-brainer, um, is creating such controversy, and I appreciate the spirited discussion. And I would like to move forward with ensuring that this issue is taken care of, that the city is compensated for the services already used, and that it's done in a way that is streamlined and simple and routine. So if there are any additional comments, please keep them brief. Otherwise, I will entertain a motion.
Yeah, I'll just go ahead and respond quickly. Um, first of all, we are a corporation. It says it in the, uh, this beat about our city and it is corporation. Secondly, I don't want to be misrepresented because I didn't state that businesses should take a pass on this. Matter of fact, so there are a few businesses on here, but mostly this applies to the people. Um, and I'm just gonna re- reiterate that this isn't a routine issue anymore. Uh, because you look at the disparity between, you know, people that have money and the people that don't, and it's a huge disparity right now. People all over this country, all over the state, all over this county and city unanimously has, have stated that they don't appreciate government status quo politics at this time. They're very unhappy with status quo politics. It's one of the reasons, it's pretty much the biggest reason that I ran on, is to represent the people. And when do the little people, you know, we're not a democracy, we are a republic. We just stood up and said the statute, uh, the, um,
Pledge of Allegiance.
Pledge of Allegiance to, to, and, and it basically says, you know, "We are a republic. We recognize we're a republic." That means that we have two-thirds vote, we represent the little guy, too. Not just the people who have all the money and the power, we represent the little guy. That's what I'm up here doing, is representing the little guy, okay? We have a lot of little guys right now because of the economy. You take a look, you know, the example was given about going to the store and pay your, pay your grocery bill. Look how many people are walking into grocery stores and taking groceries without paying. Not saying that's right. I've personally been in the grocery store, couldn't pay my bill, and had someone step up and said, "Here, here's fifty bucks," and paid, and that's community, and it's not socialism. We're talking about caring about each other in this community. That's why I'm standing up for the little guy who deserves to be stand, stood up for. We, we are facing that disparity in our, in our communities right now heavily. A lot of people are losing their homes, they can't afford to pay rent, they can't afford to pay their PG&E, they can't afford to pay their water bill. Why isn't the city considering this as a service for people when it is an unalienable, uninfrangible right, and you can't survive without water? When you put them on the tax roll, if they lose their house due to not paying their bill, then, uh, you know, then that's partly is because they can't pay their taxes, you know, which this is assessed to their tax roll.
Joe, I think.
So, so you get my point. I'm not, I, I, I'm not trying to disparage city staff, I respect their job. I'm just saying, let's work harder to work with these people rather than assess their tax roll, which is an unconstitutional move, period.
Tom, do you have anything you would like to say before I go?
Yeah, sure. I'll keep it brief as well. Um, whether we end up agreeing on everything here today or not, I appreciate that we're rooted in a desire to, uh, work together for our community. And so whether, um, we agree on how we move forward, or, or if we end up agreeing that the move is as it's laid out in front of us, or if we make small changes in the future, once again, I appreciate that the conversation is focused on our ability to do better as a whole. And so I would just like to say that I, um, I want to continue to have that ability to work with the other four of you moving forward, and I appreciate that much today. Um, whatever happens, respectfully, agreeing or disagreeing. So thank you.
Thank you. Um, I, I'd like to just say a couple of things on this. I, I watched the meeting before when I was out of town, so I did watch it live. Um, I do know that our city and our city staff has worked with people multiple times. They've helped waive late fees if somebody paid for it in full. They've helped establish payment plans. Um, my concern on if we don't move forward with this is that this hundred and fifty thousand dollars comes back before us when we reassess the sewer and water bill, and then we have to add another increase in our fees, and then that's another increase in the fees for the whole community at large. I wanted, I listened to you speak about Constitution, and I listened to you speak at the last meeting, and I'm listening to you here. I, however, don't feel that there is, I'm not understanding a solution here. And so I would like, it, it, how, I, I don't see the solution. I don't see where you, where you given it some advice on what the city should do to be able to help collect besides call each individual person, which I feel like we've done our due diligence on what we're, what we're needing to do here. So that's my only comment. My comment is this is very much a black and white thing that we go through a lot. I do hear you, however, but I do think that our city staff works very well with helping people when they need help. And I know that they have a due diligence that they do, and they, and they have helped set up agreed monthly payments. They have helped people get through what they needed to get through if they had the conversation. However, this hundred and fifty-nine, three hundred and fifteen thousand dollars and seventy cents, that's gonna come back to us, and that's going to affect the entire city at large when we reassess the water and sewer bill, because that is a debt.
Okay. I appreciate everybody's insight and heartfelt commentary. And I think we all know each other's feelings and ideas. And if we want to, you know, work going forward on a, on a different way to do this or another idea, I, we're, we are all here for each other, and we can talk about that. But for now, let's go ahead and, um, close the comments and bring it back to the council for, um.
I would like to make a motion to adopt Resolution twenty-two-five dash thirty-nine requesting that the County of Nevada levy and collect delinquent sewer and water charges. requesting that the County of Nevada levy and collect delinquent sewer and water charges on the property tax roll.
I will second.
Okay. All those in favor, we're going to go ahead and do a roll call on this.
Councilmember Arbuckle?
Yes.
Councilmember Bonamalo?
No.
Councilmember Ivy?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Carabelli?
Yes.
Mayor Hodge?
Yes.
Motion passes for one.
Excellent. Thank you very much. Have fun at the fair this week.
Can I say one, one quick thing?
Oh, you have a report.
Just one, no, 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 we don't do that. But I just have one good thing. Tonight is National Night Out, so at 5:30 at Memorial Park. I just wanted to kind of slide that in there. So if anybody would like to come, it's a very fun event. It's fun for your kids. It's fun to make sure you don't get near the colors. Otherwise, you're going to come home tie-dyed. So anyway, thank you for that.